Please rise for the pledge of pride and education. God bless you and do as I and I wish America through the great college of which stands one nation under God, native as all who live in this world.
Since we are approaching Memorial Day this weekend, the invocation will be dedicated to our veterans. Let us, not only today but every day, honor the veterans who served their country, who exposed themselves to the risk in military service, who put our country above self when our way of life was threatened, who have borne America's battles, who have defended the borders of freedom, who have protected our nation's security in war and peace, who have risked and given their lives for causes they believed in, especially freedom and democracy. Thank you, veterans. God bless all of you. Amen.
The reporter shows up, I saw it back.
Mayor Stafford. Your alderman Lincoln.
Here.
Alderman Sahaski.
Here.
Alderman Weston.
Here.
Alden Cavallaro.
Here.
Alderman Thompson.
Here.
Alderman Woodward, City Attorney David Hawthorne.
Here.
All present, your honor, except for six Ward aldermen.
Thank you. Do we have any items to be added to the agenda?
Yes, your honor, we have item numbers, resolution 11-17, and that item is for me to advertise for bids for the construction of the pump station on South Forest Street, the upgrade.
Thank you.
There was another resolution proposal presented May 16th, I think that's in John Lincoln's word, regarding 64 West First Street.
I didn't put that on as a resolution because I wanted to just let everybody know that somebody was interested and give you guys a chance to decide if you wanted to re-auction or sell. Maybe we should have that as a discussion.
But they don't give discussion for that. Because I've got a second, I got a call on today. First item.
Whereas Marguerite Lincoln passed from this life on May 13th, 2002, and whereas Margaret B. Lincoln was a native of the city of Fulton, and whereas Mrs. Lincoln retired in 1998 after 15 years as clerk of the Oswego County Legislature in 1997, she was named Citizen of the Year by the Fulton City Republican Committee, and whereas Margaret B. Lincoln was a former member of the American Business Women's Association in Fulton, Secretary of the New York State Organization of Clerks of Legislative Boards, and a member of the New York State Association of Counties, and whereas Margaret B. Lincoln is survived by one daughter, Eileen Mills of Indianapolis, two sons, John R. Lincoln of Fulton and Edward of Baldensville, four grandchildren and two great-grandchildren, and whereas the mayor and members of this common council share a great sense of loss for the family of the late Margaret Lincoln and do with deepest regret take official notice of her passing, now therefore be it resolved that this resolution of respect be spread upon the official records of the common council meeting of May 21st, 2002, and copies of it transmitted to the immediate family of the late Margaret B. Lincoln.
Motion.
I'll move it.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
opposed. John, with all from the council, our sincere condolences under the laws.
Thank you very much.
Next item.
Resolved that the minutes of the council meeting held on May 7th, 2002 are hereby approved as per attached.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
opposed. Motion's carried. Next item.
Whereas at a meeting the council held on May 7th, the clerk was authorized and directed to advertise for a public hearing to be held at this meeting of May 21st relative to a proposed local law which would amend Chapter 154 of the Fulton City Code entitled Taxation by adding Article 9, subsection 154-46 through 154-51, said local law, if adopted, would allow real property tax exemptions to first-time homebuyers of newly constructed homes. Mayor Stafford will now declare this public hearing open.
Prior to opening it to public comments, Alderman Thompson, would you care to just brief us on just what this is?
This is the first-time homebuyer?
Yes, yes.
What this allows, New York State law now allows for the exemption of real property taxes for first-time homebuyers that purchase either a newly constructed home or a newly renovated home. When I spoke with the guy that wrote the law, he said that conversion of multifamily to single-family would qualify as newly converted or newly renovated, realizing that there's not going to be very much impact within the city because there's such a large existing housing stock for sale. Who is going to be a first-time homebuyer and pay $120,000 to build something new and then go up and down just about any street and pick up what they want for 50,000 or 60,000 unless they're in Bob's neighborhood? That being said, we're still trying to stay on top of the state senator and state assemblyman, both from Long Island, to encourage them to make some changes to what has been passed last November, the most important thing obviously being the elimination of only first-time homebuyers. But we want to stay in step with the state as they adopt these changes, as they evolve, and this is the first step that is allowed by state.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that cares to speak on this matter? Anyone on the council?
No.
Motion to close the public hearing?
I'll move it.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now therefore be it resolved that the proposed local law as described above is hereby adopted.
Motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed. Motion's carried. Next item.
Whereas a meeting of the council held on May 7th, the clerk was authorized and directed to advertise for a public hearing to be held at this meeting of May 21, relative to a proposed local law which would delete subsection 118-12 of the plumbing code of the Fulton, which would retitle subsection 118-12 of the plumbing code entitled Issuance of Certificate of Competency, forfeiture thereof. Said local law, if adopted, would give an applicant 60 days after notification of issuance of certificate of occupancy to apply for a license. Failure to do so by the applicant shall void said certificate of competency and require said applicant to take the test over before he or she could be licensed. Mayor Stafford will declare the public hearing open.
This legislation is based on a suggestion from the Plumbing Board. Mr. Langley, you're part of that, being a member of that org.
Yes.
Do you have any information you can bring forward on this?
The actual reasoning for this, if you think about it, is quite simple. We've had cases in the past, and I don't know how many times this has occurred, whereupon somebody takes their test, passes their test, and at that point, they're determined to be competent to perform either a plumbing or heating work within our city. The problem arises from the fact that, once you have that, the next step is that you have to apply for said license. And what the application process is, is that you have to show proof of insurance and you have to actually apply for your license, whereupon the city is protected and the individual homeowners are protected, in that, in order to do that type of work, you need to be insured and you have to ride the city with these insurance certificates. What we've had in the past happen is that somebody will pass the test, go literally six, eight, nine months down the road, we call them, we send them numerous letters, try to get them to come in and activate their license, because at that point, they don't have a license. Then, after nine months, they get a contract to perform a job, and all of a sudden, it's an issue to apply for the license. We've had people actually do this, well, I have a contract, I have to do this tomorrow. Well, it causes a burden to the city and to the taxpayers because we're constantly trying to keep tabs on these people. And this is not just after 60 days you lose it, this is after we've gone through the process of notifying them, and this is no different than if you apply for your driver's license. They don't call your house every day and say, hey, by the way, your license renewal's up, can you please come in and renew it? So that's really where the issue's at. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joe. Joe, before you sit down. How does this compare with any other municipality in terms of how they apply this?
To be honest with you, Joe, I'm not sure. I don't know if Syracuse does a forfeiture after so many days or not. I know that there is typically a time element on that, and we felt that 60 days was a reasonable time element to put on there. And like I said, this is after notifying these people. We've literally had cases where somebody has come in and taken a test, passed that test, and then a year or two down the road is looking for a license. It's just, there's no reason to do that. Plus, the city loses the fees of continually maintaining the license. We actually are paying fees to the city to keep our license active. If you want to continually not keep your license active, then you have to pay that fee. So what people do is to avoid the fees, they say, well, jeez, I'm not going to activate my license until I absolutely need it. It's no different than your driver's license. You don't just go down there and say, please, I want to activate my driver's license, I feel like driving today.
I just wanted to see how we might compare with any other municipality, if any research was done along that line.
Yeah, and had this not been an issue, we never would have brought it forth. It was an ongoing thing that we were finding, for whatever reason. If this was an isolated case, where this happened once in a while, it wouldn't have even been an issue, but it's one of these situations where it's continually becoming a problem for us. Thanks.
Thank you.
Can I add one more thing? The Legislative Committee initially was reluctant to consider this because it seemed to us that there wasn't really a rational reason for the request. The request seemed to say, or what we responded was, if somebody wants to take the test and not get licensed, so be it. They paid us a fee to take them the test, but we've had some discussions back and forth between Legislative Committee and the Plumbing HVAC Board, and what changed my mind is, actually was pointed out to me by Bryce Talents, that there is a state law that allows the city to require registration, which our code does, and there is a attorney general's opinion that indicates that if registration is required, it should follow soon after obtaining the certificate of competency, which presupposes that you're passing the test. So, following their logic, the state's really saying, if you pass the test, you should register soon, so that's why we finally said, well, we have some state precedent for it, therefore, there seems to be a reason or a state mandated basis or a state allowed basis for us to pass this. That's why we, Legislative Committee then, put it forward.
Thank you. Mr. Sutery.
Mr. Mayor, gentlemen, you too, Bob.
Yeah, thank you.
Nice jacket. Nice jacket. I won't comment to the tie, you might say I'm unpatriotic. I was former president of the Plumbing Board, and I was instrumental, in fact, in having Mr. Langley as appointed to the board, and I did so because of his high regard for his intelligence and his experience. And I'm not here to argue the point of this new ordinance. I just think some of the reasoning behind it, although makes it, you know, something we need to do, I think the penalty is severe. When I was the president of the board, we used to have a requirement, you pick up your license by December 31st, or your license is considered abandoned and revoked. And I moved that up to the 31st of January, simply because men are out of town, Christmas holidays, they're involved, they're busy, they forget. So we moved it to 31st. Now I understand, Joe can correct me if I'm wrong, if you don't get in by the 31st, your license is revoked and considered abandoned?
That's not correct. What typically, that is partially correct, and you're well aware of this item, what typically happens after that timeframe collapses, you request the individual come to the board. And at that point in time, what normally happens, the individual comes to the board, and what they can either do is they can say their case as to why they failed to renew it, and typically what the board has done in the past is issue a small fine and then they renew it. We've had cases where that same individual's come before the board two years ago, and you're aware of that. So we felt that in order to stop that bad behavior, there had to be a penalty involved with you not fulfilling your obligation.
That's my subject. Penalty. I seem to, I'm feeling this thing about, if you don't adhere to what we say, we're going to take your plumbing license away from you, and you're going to have to take another test to prove your competency. Now, if I have taken a plumbing test and I have proven myself to be competent, I shouldn't have to take another test to prove myself competent again because I'm a procrastinator, or I'm lazy, or I didn't get there. Now, we did give them a small fine and penalty for not showing up. I think you should do the same thing with the new man who takes his test, for whatever reason, maybe a young guy, wife, couple of kids, has a choice of 150 for the license, or groceries, or pay the electrical bill, and he can't make it. He shouldn't be told on the 61st day, your license is abandoned, you have to pay another 150 bucks to sit and take another test. Why? I'm already competent. If Mr. Hawthorne left the state for five years and came back, I don't think he required to sit before the bar and take another exam. You're already competent. You're already a proven attorney.
If I left my business for two years, I have to take my exam again?
You have to take your test again?
Yep. You lose your license after two years, it expires.
Two years?
Yep.
Not 60 days?
Two years.
Now, I can see where people do not come in when they're supposed to, but I think the penalty could be doubling the fee of the license, shelving the license for a fee, charging them a penalty, but I don't think you can call the man incompetent and have the guy sit down and take another test. It's like holding a sledgehammer over someone's head. And I'm a little disturbed because it seems like all the rules and regulations are applied to the licensed plumber and heating workers, when, in fact, we have moonlighters out there doing more plumbing than the licensed plumbers. And we can't call them moonlighters any longer. A moonlighter used to infer the guy had a day job and was doing it at night in the darkness. Not so. They're working full-time at plumbing and heating with their trucks painted. They're in the Yellow Pages, they're in the newspapers, they're doing plumbing without a license. And Mr. Mayor, you received a letter from one of the local plumbers, and he gave you a list of six or eight jobs that were underway by unlicensed men. They were never checked. I'm not saying it's your fault, but you passed it down to the proper people. The code enforcement office did not go out to these jobs, a fact, and say, why are you doing plumbing without a license? But I hear I am a competent licensed plumber for 40 years, if I get there on February 2nd, my license is pulled, I have to take another test. The guy that's putting in the three-piece bath, the furnace, the water service, and the sewer line without a license isn't being bothered, I'm being harassed. So if we want to put this energy into something, put it into going after the guys that don't pay for licenses, don't take tests, don't pay fees, don't have insurance, let's get after those guys. And if the guy goes over 60 days, good, give him a penalty, charge him double, do whatever you want to do. I have to ask Mr. Langley as another question if I can. We were going to have $150 for a test, and when Vaughn was here, and I said it wasn't fair, you should have a second chance if you fail.
Yes.
And he was going to charge 150 for both, we changed it to 150 for two.
For two tests.
Is it still 150 for two?
For two tests or two licenses.
Two tests.
I'm not 100 sure, I think you're correct. I know they get the second test if they don't pay, they get the second test free, because we've had people who have what we call marginal scores, so that they're allowed to, no, bear in mind, I may, anytime an individual, see, the whole problem with testing people is subjective. Just because somebody is not very good on the paper aspect of the testing doesn't necessarily mean that they're incompetent to actually physically do the work, because the majority of plumbing, electrical work, and heating work is a skilled trade work, it's not just a written work. So we have times when somebody will give what we would call a failing score in the 50, 60 range, which is failing, no matter how you develop her. We allow that individual, at that point, they had the opportunity to go through the test procedure, they had an idea what typically questions they had to test, they had a better feel for doing it again. We allow them to do that to give them a second opportunity to pass the test. Most of the people coming before the board do pass their tests, and we understand that at that point, our board feels that part of the responsibility of the plumbing inspector and our code portion of people is to do the inspection to make sure the work is being done properly. We're not here to run anybody out of business, we're not here to make it hard for anybody to get a license in our community, what we are saying is that this is the way the rules are written, you have to obey the rules. Having a license is not a right, it is something that the state allows you to do. There's nothing in the Constitution that says you have to have a license. When you apply for a license, you have to agree to the terms of the license. So that is a two-way street. And Mr. Sutery is well aware of the fact that, in the number of years that he's served on the board as well as myself, I can honestly not recall ever yanking anybody's license in terms of saying, oh, well, you did something wrong, we're going to pull your license. And I don't know if your experience has been the same, but we view that as a very, very serious offense. We've had, in my time on the board, we've had one contractor whose license was revoked, that person actually had to go through our court proceeding, there was restitution paid to the homeowner, but the work was so subpar that to say that that individual had any level of competency, we just refused it. And that person actually had to pay the homeowner damages back in the court proceeding, and that's how it's done. In reference to the issue in regards to the inspection, the listing, I would like to address that because this is my understanding, and that item is dropped before the board and Sutery. We just cannot go to somebody's house and say, you're doing plumbing, or you hired somebody illegal, you literally have to catch the person in the actual act you're doing it. And that is very, very difficult, because some of these jobs are such a quick trip around, that a person can go there in the morning, be done in the afternoon, the plumbing inspector, the building codes people are notified the next day, they go there, the work is done, there's no proof that that individual did that. You know, I'm not the city attorney, I'm not going to sit here and say that that's right or wrong, but it's our understanding that we literally have to catch them in the act. And we have caught people in the act doing work without a license. We have had those people be issued appearance tickets and actually had to come to court, and they've actually lost those cases because there was a proof of that occurring. So, you know, we have a system, it's perfect, no, it's not perfect, but we're trying to work within the parameters that are established. Thank you.
The flood of turnover, the quick turnover is true in some cases, not where they're putting the eggs, or stage stays, or remodel the bathroom, or stage stays, or kitchen. Example time, the list that was turned in, those jobs were on the front of the progress at the time. But a man up the street from me was harassed because he didn't finish painting his house. Housing inspector was right, and I said, it's ready to get finished in May, Tom. Down the street, the guy's wearing a water heater without a license. I mean, you drive fast, water heater sitting in the curb, you're asking, harass the guy about beach. I got a young man with a baby in the middle of the way. I'm saying is, competency means I prove I'm competent as a plumber. If I'm a procrastinator, I don't get there in time, so I'm a pro, that shouldn't be penalized because I didn't have the 150 bucks. Joe is right, some people do it late and too long in the state system. So if you're going to penalize them, don't do it by quoting a license and taking them out of the test. And I've always been, you know, trying to be fair to both sides, I see both. Every time I make a post, I'm getting a hundred and a half, take my license, it's not fair. So we had a couple saying, why the heck should I pay $2,000, $2,500 a year for insurance? As long as I'm here. I couldn't get around, I was a truck, you know, last week, and I watched, reading newspaper, and I know him personally, and I said, do you mind saying you got your insurance company? She says, yeah. I said, are you happy? He says to me, no, we won't be happy until we make 16 or 80 dollars an hour like plumbers do. You know, the work of plumbers has its own competition, you're automatically crooked, you're overcharged, right? So I said to the gentleman, a plumber gets 40 bucks. We got plenty of time to talk, you have traffic packed up anyway. And I said, we get 40 bucks, but we pay compensation, liability, disability, state tax, sales tax, income tax, Yellow Pages, telephone, truck, hired help. When I'm done, I get 13 dollars an hour, less than you, but you have all the benefits. You have insurance, glasses, teeth, retirement, the whole schmear, I've got nothing. My wife is still working part-time because her job handles my insurance, and I have no benefits. And this guy is telling me that he's not going to be happy until he gets what the plumber gets. I told him he won't be happy. I make less money than the trash man. I got to buy my own insurance, nobody's giving it to me. And he said anything else? I said, yes, move your truck. And we left friendly. But, you know, the plumber is always making all this money, therefore, we should all be, I thought it was mechanics, I didn't know it was the plumbers. And lawyers, you know, listen, I get on the lawyers. I'm teasing him because of the crack he made before the meeting to me. Joe heard it. Okay, gentlemen, thank you for your time, and please, when it comes time to vote about that, think about the penalty, rather than pulling it and calling him incompetent and giving him another test, try and do something else with it. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would care to speak on this? Anyone on the council?
Send it back to plumbing and ask them their opinion. Good boy. Care, right? That's a fair request. Dave, what was the information you quoted about the state? The state has an opinion, the attorney general's opinion, that does say that you should activate your license within a reasonable time of getting your certificate of competency, but it doesn't define that. So, I think a year would not be reasonable, two months is certainly reasonable, was four or five months reasonable? I don't know, I think it probably is.
Well, I think the question that Al's bringing up, that I see Joe's point, maybe somewhere in the middle lies the best solution versus taking the test over, be it double or add some sufficient.
Yeah. Dave, when's the next test?
I'm not sure.
It's not for a while.
It only tests twice a year, right?
But, see, the, some of the points that Al's making are correct, but we also, we have safety nets for all these issues. Once you activate your license, you can shelve your license, that's a $25 minimal cost, you don't have to provide proof of insurance. So we have financial safety nets for all of these individual situations. Am I going to sit here and tell you that as a board member, if somebody comes to me on day 61, we're going to yank his license? Probably not, but it's the impetus to get them to act and do what they're supposed to do. This is after phone calls are made, this is not one day we just say, okay, there you go, you're all done. And granted, maybe if you want to look at fining people, I'm not a big fan of arbitrarily issuing fines to some people and not others, we kind of feel that if you put it in the legislation, it's going to eliminate the problem.
So you're saying, Joe, you pull the license, they got to take the test over again, additional
This is after phone calls are made, this is not one day we just say, okay, there you go, you're all done. And granted, maybe if you wanna look at fining people, I'm not a big fan of arbitrarily issuing fines to some people and not others. We kinda feel that if you put it in the legislation, it's gonna eliminate the problem.
So you're saying, Joe, you pull the license, they gotta take the license, the, the test over again, additional fee, or no?
Well, Joe, whether you, whether you find them, or whether you didn't find them, the cost is gonna be the same. That's, that's my point. Let's say that they pass the test.
But that's what I'm asking, you're, you're gonna recharge them to take the test.
Right. Correct. That's if they violate the new, if you do choose to pass this, if they were to violate it, that's up, that's a decision that the board can make.
But I guess the distinction I wanna make is, if they pass the test, what good is it to tell them to take the test over? If they're gonna have to pay another hundred and fifty bucks, then fine them a hundred and fifty. They already passed the test.
Believe me, Joe, these people do not wanna take this test. It's just more of an impetus to get them to activate their license.
More discretion.
You know, it really is, it's more of an impetus.
Versus the fine?
Versus the fine, seriously. If you were to, if you were to take, and I'm not saying our, our test is, is so difficult that it's hard to do, most people do not feel comfortable taking tests, it's just human nature. They would prefer to pay the money than have to take a test again.
I guess I don't understand then why, how much of a problem is this? I mean, how many plumbers are we talking about that we go through this with every year?
On the renewals, on average, we're making thirty, forty phone calls.
How many times do they, how often do they have to take the test?
Since I've been on the board, probably half a dozen.
How, how often do they have to take the test?
One time if they keep their license active.
Okay, so, one time, you're telling me that we got, how many cases a year?
I, Joe, you're asking me to make an arbitrary number without, without being able to do that, I can't tell you that.
Well, if you can't tell me that, what's the impetus to do this?
The impetus to do that is very simple, there is a statute that allows us to say what is determined by the board to be a reasonable time. When we first presented this, is, from the, from the plumbing and heating board, we felt that this wasn't gonna be an issue that warranted any true discussion, because the board is allowed to make those determinations and to make those, those judgments on what we feel is reasonable. If your contention to us is, well, we feel that two months is not reasonable, then, I guess what has to happen is we have to say, well, is it gonna be three months? Is it gonna be four months? If you come back and say, well, we don't like this at all, then that, then it has to go back full circle again. It wasn't presented as a choice of point to say, okay, let's not do it this way, let's levy fines to these people.
Well, I guess, in order to vote on something, Joe, I'm trying to get myself oriented to why this even came here. If, if the problem is that you have a great number of people that are not coming forward to pay their dues, to get their license, that's why you wanna do this? You're telling me they only take the test once to be licensed in the city? I'm asking you, how many people do you have to go after, after sixty days, to come forward and pay for their license? If that's not, if that's not answerable, then why is this before us?
You're asking two separate questions. You're asking a question on, on a license issue and a test issue, and you're asking a question on a renewal issue. Once you have your license, doesn't mean you have a, a license in perpetuity where you never have to, to pay another, another dime for it. These licenses have to have renewals on them, they have to be done yearly. If it's not a problem for, if it's not a problem for the city to spend the additional monies to continually mail, and to spend the additional manpower to continually contact these people, then that's a decision as an alderman that you can make. It's not, it's not a decision for me to make.
I'm asking a question so that I can better understand the issue. I'm not questioning your reasoning. I'm not understanding the issue here.
Joe, the, the situation is with the initial license. This is only the initial license.
Mm-hmm.
Once they take a test and they get their certificate, pass the test and get a certi- certificate of competency.
Right.
This legislation will require them to get their license within sixty days of that date. Now, there, there are some people that are not doing that.
That's my question. How many is some?
I don't know how many, they haven't given me numbers. But what has happened is now, all of a sudden, this person that has passed the test has the certificate, all of a sudden, they get a contract, and then their poor planning creates havoc administratively within the city to get the license.
That, that's correct, Mr. Mayor.
That, all we're trying to do is get them to get their license within sixty days, so then it doesn't create a problem in the future. This has nothing to do with the renewal of the license. It's only the initial license.
Joe, also, a clarification, what is shelving the license? What does that actually mean?
What, shelving your license, let me give you an example of where that came about. Let's say that you are an employee of a plumbing contractor, and let's say you're one of five plumbers who work for one of our local plumbing contractors, or somebody from Syracuse, it doesn't really matter. That, that license is granted individually, there's no reason for a company to have five individual license holders. Let's say I'm working for somebody, that means I wouldn't typically have all of the insurance items that Mr. Scutari talked about, I wouldn't have a way of obtaining insurance. So I wouldn't have a way of activating that license. So what they, they're allowed to do is shell that license for a nominal fee of twenty-five dollars. What the nominal fee covers is the continually, right, twenty-five each, that covers the continual cost of mailing and making sure that these people have so many years in which they can do that. I believe they're allowed to do that for five years, before they have to come before the board and ask for another five years. It's because we're trying to not put a financial hardship on somebody to say, I, we're, let's say, for an example, I work for a local plumbing contractor, I'm working for that individual, I don't wanna have to have an expense of the two hundred and some odd dollars plus an insurance cost of the two thousand dollars to keep a license active, I don't need because I'm working under the supervision of a licensed contractor. So they are allowed to shell that, so that's the additional safety net.
Does each one of those plumbers have to have a license, I mean, to perform their duties, right?
The, each one of the plumbers either has to have a license, or they have to be supervised by a license holder. The license is not granted to a company, it's granted to an individual.
Right.
It's no different than, I hate, I hate to keep using this analogy, it's no different than your, your automobile license, it's not granted to your car, it's granted to the driver.
Right.
So let's say you wanna drive the car, you have to have one, your wife wants to drive the car, she has to have one. Any of your children wanna drive the car, they all have to have one. What this allows you to do is, let's say, instead of having to have your daughter on your insurance and pay all that premium, it would be nice if you could say, well, let's shell her license, so that she wouldn't be able to drive. See what I'm getting at? The licenses are granted to individuals, not companies. So, once you pass your competency, touch, yes, your competency, nobody's arguing the issue of the competency. What we're saying is that please allow this to be done, to make it easier for the, for the people in the city, it's who it's easier for, it doesn't affect me as a board member. I'm not the one who has to make those phone calls, I'm not the one who has to pay for the additional mailings and, and do all that additional work.
Thank you. I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, but I think it's something that should be clarified, right? If you don't mind taking the extra time.
Sure.
And Mr. Cavallaro, you're right, you are touching on two different things. First of all, when the man takes his test and he gets his new license, he has to pick it up in sixty days, that's one type of license. Joe said there was only one person that went maybe nine months. So it's very rare that someone doesn't pick it up, they're usually very excited about having their license. They get it before sixty days. I'm worried about the guy that can't get there on the sixty-first day. Shouldn't be considered incompetent, that's one. The second thing that you mentioned is true, after the thirty-first of January, you can have your license revoked, or considered null and void, because you didn't come in and pay your hundred and fifty dollars for the fee. So there is two things there, you're absolutely right.
But the, but the local, this change, the local law, doesn't.
Doesn't affect that.
Doesn't affect that at all. We're only talking about the initial license.
Right. Which, you're, you're absolutely right, but I'm concerned about this hammer-on-the-head business of pulling licenses and calling them incompetent, for whichever reason comes up, whether it be the thirty-first of January, or the sixty-first day of a new license. That's the problem. You can penalize them, you can double the fee, you can do anything you want to them, but I don't think you should consider them incompetent. I don't think a man should have to take his test twice. That is my only point.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Anyone on the council? Have a motion to close a public hearing?
I'll move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing is closed. Now, does anyone care to offer a resolution at this point in time?
I, I would like to make a suggestion, if I may, to the council. I hear what Joe says, and I hear what Mr. Scutari says, I think I do have a problem with the fact that we require somebody to take a test over that they've already passed. Perhaps there is another remedy. If there is such a significant problem with individuals who, for the first time, come forward to take a test and don't come and pay it within sixty days, why would we wanna require them to take a test over that they took two months ago? Should we increase the fine? Is that an option?
Well, that is, that is a possibility. Now, do I, do I understand that, that you're making a motion that we refer this back to legislative for further review?
Yes, I guess I would.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Do we have a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
You have a motion, a second, to refer this item back to the legislative committee for further review.
Do we wanna, uh, we wanna include the next item, too?
Well, I think you gotta.
We have to have the public hearing, I have to, we'll have to do it. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion is carried. Next item.
Whereas, at the meeting of the council held on May seventh, the clerk was authorized and directed to advertise for a public hearing for this meeting relative to proposed local law which would retitle subsection sixty-two dash eleven of the mechanical HVAC code of the city of Fulton entitled issuance of certificate of competency forfeiture thereof. Said local law, if adopted, shall give an applicant sixty days after notification of issuance of certificate of competency to apply for a license. Failure to do so by the applicant shall void said certificate of competency. We require said applicant to take the test over before he or she could be licensed. Mayor Stafford would declare the hearing open.
This is addressing the same issue with the HVAC.
Correct.
Yes. Is there anyone in the audience that would care to speak on this issue? Anyone on the council?
I would recommend here that we send it back.
Okay.
Revisited.
Motion to close a public hearing?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Now, you're making a motion to send this one back also for review, back, send it back to legislative committee. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Next item.
Um, do we, do this, I wonder if we know, we're gonna go in coordination with the company or not, or?
We'll do, we'll have it placed there.
Okay. Resolved, the clerk be authorized and directed to advertise for a public auction to be held on Thursday, June twenty-seventh, at the DPW garage on North Fifth Street, the purpose of auctioning all unclaimed bicycles abandoned over the past year, and any vehicles no longer useful for government purpose, and all other miscellaneous items that have outlasted their use and no longer needed by the city departments.
Motion?
I'll move it.
Second?
Second, Lieutenant. Where are we gonna advertise, besides our?
We advertise this in the local paper?
In the, in the official city newspaper.
Is that gonna be sufficient for the equipment that might be available through the DPW, for anybody of any consequence to bid on?
I, I don't.
It has been.
It has always been, we've never had a problem in the past.
Most companies are gonna bid on that kinda stuff.
People also have the ability to inspect any of the vehicles prior to the auction, too.
I was just concerned about getting the most exposure.
Are you suggesting that we also expand that into the Syracuse paper?
Yes, I am.
Okay. I think we can do that. Do we have a motion and a second?
Yes, we do, your honor.
I'm adding the other newspaper to the.
That could be procedural.
Oh, okay. We have a motion, right, Alderman Sahaskin, and second by Alderman Weston.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item.
Resolved, the city clerk's report for March two thousand and two in the amount of four thousand six hundred ninety-three dollars and forty-six cents in April two thousand and two, in the amount of nine thousand nine hundred and eighty-one dollars and seventy cents, are hereby received, approved, and placed on file.
Motion?
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Next item.
Whereas the meeting of the council held on May seventh, the zone change request submitted by Mr. Stephen Tietro for his property located at Route Three and Holly Drive was referred back to the Fulton Planning Commission at the advice of the city attorney for his letter dated April eighteenth, because the property involved was partially in an R-three zone and partially in an R-one zone. Therefore, it was advised that this matter be reexamined by the city and county planning commissions. Whereas the planning commission at their meeting of May thirteenth, two thousand and two unanimously voted to approve the zone change request, being an R-one and an R-three change of zone to C-two. Whereas the county planning, for their letter of May eighth, two thousand and two, to Steve Lund, zoning officer for the city of Fulton, the copy of which is attached, in which they stated that the fact that the site in question is within two different residential districts instead of one does not change the nature of the zone change request. Now therefore be it resolved that based on the recommendations of both the city and county planning commissions, that the city clerk is hereby authorized and directed to advertise for a public hearing to be held on Tuesday, June twenty-fifth, at seven P.M. in the council chambers, relative to the zone change request submitted by Mr. Stephen Tietro for his property located at Route Three and Holly Drive, for a change of zone from R-one and R-three residential to C-two commercial.
Is there a motion?
I'm ready. Can I ask a question?
Well, we, yeah, after we have a motion.
I'll move it.
Do we have a second?
We have a second.
I'll second it.
Okay, now, do we have discussion?
Oh, yes. How come we are doing it at our first meeting in June? Why is it, why is it being done at the twenty-fifth of, of, uh, the month?
First meeting in June will be the mayor's conference, the mayor will be away.
No, no, first meeting will be the eleventh. First meeting, we changed to June meetings.
Right, we, we changed them to the eleventh and the twenty-fifth.
Right, but. Was there a reason why it wasn't the eleventh?
That's what, that's what I'm asking.
To give more, to give more time to advertise it, for the people to get notification.
Okay.
Because we have to send letters out to all the people that it affects.
Mr. Mayor, uh, with this proposed, uh, action, I have one question in here, I've lived in that area all my life, can you tell me where the intersection of Route Three and Holly Drive is?
Where the intersection of Route Three?
It says at Holly, Route Three and Holly Drive, that to me appears as an intersection, I don't know if it is or not.
There, one on the side.
I don't think it's stated properly in there.
It's Route Three, well, it's, it's known as Route Three and Holly Drive, it's not, it's not an intersection.
Well, it states that it is here.
Well, it doesn't say an intersection.
It says Route Three and Holly Drive. At, and.
It says and.
And. On the resolution, it says and. You're looking at the agenda items, which may not be stating it correctly. Okay. It's Route Three and Holly Drive. It's, it's, does it mean that both are noted as both?
It's not, it's noted as both, to, to, for, that was done for clarification purposes.
Perhaps we should amend the resolution to add the tax map number, so there's no.
Good idea.
Two-three-six-point-five-eight-dash-zero-two-dash-one-three, tax map.
Yes, that's correct.
Do we need to amend the, since we have a motion?
Yeah, motion second, you need to amend it. Yeah, that's a good idea. Just in case.
Motion, motion to, uh, for amendment?
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is amended. Now, on the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Next item.
I think Dave may have to speak on this because it's basically, we have no... This is the appearance ticket issue.
Right.
I don't know if this holds a resolution.
Well, I don't just... I'll speak on it.
Okay.
Are we ready?
Yes, next issue.
This is the appearance ticket, uh, law that we have requested. I believe it came not just from me, I hope, but just from, from the Legislative Committee, right? We've since discovered, it was tabled at the last meeting, we've since discovered, and I don't think anybody can be, um, called upon to know every word in our city laws, but it's actually in there already. There is, this authority exists.
In a different section.
In a different section, for the Bureau Code Chief to designate, uh, the employees of the Bureau of Code Enforcement to issue appearance tickets. So it's really not a legislative item anymore. It would be superfluous to actually add this section that we've proposed, and I, I think the Legislative Committee would like to withdraw that request. Um, it's, since it's already legislated, it's an issue that will be now handled administratively, and we've already started the dialogue with the Code Enforcement Office, and so everybody knows, they are also looking to refurbish or update, to update their computer system, which would be a good time to, um, to get into a system of, a different kind of system, or at least add, add the appearance ticket issue, um, add the ability to, to issue appearance tickets, which again is already there, but we would like to, I, I think we're going to have a, a dialogue through the summer with them about a better way to do this, frankly. And again, the requested law is no, is not necessary. I would ask that it be removed, or a, I think technically a motion to move it off the table is probably...
Yes.
...the best procedure.
Dave, could I ask a question though, that since it is in another section of the charter, would it be well to try to move this into the code section so it would be more congruous with the codes as they exist in, in the authority thereof?
I think it's actually...
It's, it's in another subsection of, of that section.
Right.
But it wasn't, it wasn't clearly annotated.
Under the code?
We may have to look to, to move it within the code, uh, do a local law to move it within the code.
That's what I mean.
So it's easier to find.
Exactly.
That's one of the things.
Would that, would that perhaps be a better thing to do with this?
We, we need to, we need to look at that, so we, we'll look at that and send that to Legislative for, for approval.
Thank you.
So we have a...
We have a motion to move, remove it from the table.
Do we have a second?
Second, can you do that?
Yes.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Next item.
Resolved that city clerk be authorized and directed to advertise for requests for proposals, RFPs, to be submitted to his office in the Fulton Municipal Building on or before Monday, June twenty-fourth up to two P.M. and to be publicly opened that same day at two fifteen P.M. in the common council chambers located on the second floor of the municipal building for New York State Disability and Life Insurance with the specifications prepared by the City of Fulton Personnel Office.
Will this information be available in your office show or in Barb's?
Um, it'll be, it'd be available in the personnel office, but the quotes will come into my office.
Motion?
I'll move it. I'll second, and for committee meeting, this is going to be advertised in the pal teams as well?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
We're going to enter the pal teams.
Mm-hmm. We have a motion and a second, Your Honor.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Next item.
Resolved that chairman will be authorized and directed to transfer twenty-nine hundred dollars from the contingent account to the personnel account, immunizations of hepatitis B series to city employees.
Hey, Bob, it only took three years. I'll move it.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Next item.
Resolved that the common council adopt the family leave act policy as agreed upon with the Fulton Common Council and the Labor Management Committee.
I'll move that.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Next item.
Whereas in nineteen ninety-five, a memorial stone was erected in front of the Fulton War Memorial Building on West Broadway in Fulton. Whereas in commemoration of our country's past conflicts, being the Revolutionary War, the War of eighteen twelve, the Mexican War, the Spanish-American War, the Civil War, World War One, World War Two, the Korean Conflict, the Vietnam War, and Operation Desert Storm, the Veterans Council will be constructing the Wall of History, which will be paved in memorial bricks which will be set in and around the main memorial. Whereas this Walk of History will be dedicated to all who have served our country, whether it be military or civilian, men and women, in peace or war, past, present, and future. Whereas the Veterans Council believes that this memorial will be the first of its kind to give an educational, it will give an educational lesson to our schoolchildren, giving them the opportunity to learn what the cost of freedom and the cost to maintain that freedom has been borne by the brave men and women who have served our country past and present. Hence comes the name Walk of History. Whereas the Veterans Council has decided that this memorial will be a community project as the Fulton War Memorial when it was built. Now therefore be it resolved that the common council hereby congratulates and supports the Veterans Council for the construction of the Wall of, Walk of History Community Project and encourages our citizens to support this great American tribute.
Motion?
I'll move it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item.
Whereas the meeting of the council held on April second opposed local law which would delete C-sixty-eight of the city charter and was properly placing an amendment to chapter one-twenty of the Property Conservation Code by amending subsection one-twenty dash fifty-one D to read, "removal of snow and ice from sidewalks within a reasonable time after ice forms and/or snow falls. Furthermore, winter debris shall be removed from sidewalks by Memorial Day of each year." Whereas after the public hearing was closed, Alderman Cavallaro stated that he would like to do some research on this proposed local law. Whereas a legislative committee would like to revisit this issue, whereas by doing so it will require a public hearing. Now therefore be it resolved that the city clerk is hereby authorized and directed to advertise for a public hearing to be held on Tuesday, June eleventh at seven P.M. in the council chambers relative to two proposed local laws. One local law would delete C-sixty-eight of the city charter entitled Cleaning Sidewalks of Snow and Ice, and the other local law would properly place an amendment to chapter one-twenty of the Property Conservation Code by amending subsection one-twenty dash fifty-one D to read, "removal of snow and ice from sidewalks within a reasonable time after ice forms and/or snow falls. Furthermore, winter debris shall be removed from sidewalks by Memorial Day of each year."
Motion?
Move it. Second.
Comment?
Yes.
Are those going to be presented as two different items?
Two different laws.
Yes.
Two separate public hearings.
Because they're affecting two different sections.
Thank you.
Yes. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item.
Resolved that the city clerk be authorized and directed to advertise for a public hearing to be held on Tuesday, June eleventh at seven P.M. relative to a proposed local law amending chapter forty-five, subsection forty-five dash seven of the Fulton City Code entitled "Bicycles."
Motion?
Move it.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Next item.
Resolved that the city clerk be authorized and directed to advertise for a public hearing to be held on Tuesday, June eleventh at seven P.M. in the council chambers relative to a proposed local law amending chapter one-seventeen of the Fulton City Code entitled Play Vehicles Guidelines for Use of by adding one-seventeen dash one-D definitions and one-seventeen dash three-B prohibited areas.
Motion?
Move it.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next item.
Whereas the city of Fulton herein after the employer established the City of Fulton Deferred Compensation Plan herein after the plan for the benefit of its employees and their beneficiaries. Now therefore be it resolved, the employer hereby resolves to exercise its right to amend the plan, and be it further resolved that the employer be authorized to execute the amendments to the plan, a copy of which is attached here too.
Mayor, can I ask a question about this?
Yes.
Why do we continue to go with Valick? Continue to enter an agreement with Valick, the variable annuity life insurance company? If you look at the back of your package, the last two pages are the administrative services agreement we have with Valick. Why them?
Because they're the ones that have been providing the services?
Since reading this contract, we have the ability to break this with sixty days' notice. Could we put that out to bid? That's true. I haven't read the contract to see if, but if it's clear in there. Um, this agreement may be terminated by either party upon sixty days' written notice to the other party of the intent to terminate. Upon such termination, agent shall deliver to the employer all records and reports required by this agreement. I'll back up a second and tell you why I'm thinking about this. This is kind of what I do for a living, and I tried to get copies of, like, an employer level statement to see what's going on and to see what kinds of fees the employees are paying, because employees pay fees and there are sub-accounts of the, the grand plan. And when I asked Barb Weymet about it, she says, "Well, we've never gotten a copy of this statement," even though, again, if you read this agreement, it says that, uh, Valick shall furnish to the employer annual and semi-annual reports, uh, for the separate accounts for distributions to participants. She says she's never gotten a master statement. I mean, employees, employees are taking their money, their hard-earned money out of their paycheck, putting it into a 401K type of investment, and the city, I have to believe, has some type of responsibility to make sure that their employees are turning over their hard-earned dollars to a reputable company that's taking care of them. And we get nothing from this company. All we give them is the employees' dollars out of their paychecks. The County of Oswego is in the process of selecting a second provider for their deferred comp plan as well. It's a long process. I put my bid in in October. They still have not awarded anything yet. There's a meeting tomorrow night, knock on wood, but looking through the county's process and all the little intricate details that go with this, I would think that we should at least be able to ask some questions of the provider. And when I spoke with the guy, I don't remember, don't even remember his name, but he was here a month and a half ago, meeting with employees in the mayor's conference room. I asked him three or four different questions. Technically, I guess I am an employee of the city because I get a paycheck here, albeit a small one, and he referred all my questions to his office in Albany or Schenectady or wherever it was they were, because he couldn't answer any of them. I don't know how you feel about that, but he just kind of rubbed me the wrong way.
I agree with you.
With me, we, you know, we can go to bid. I have no problem.
I mean, I'd be happy to help draw up the specs, and I will not, I'll disclose right now, I'm not going to bid on it. It'd be a conflict anyway, I can't, so I have no financial interest in doing it. But I would think that your investment provider, um, should be a little bit more forthcoming with, uh, his customers.
Would it make more sense to request this information that we're entitled to under the contract first, and if we get it, that'll give us a better understanding of, of where we are, and then if we don't get it, then that'll make it a lot easier to just say...
Well, even if you get it, you could still go out for bid, but I wouldn't certainly go that step first.
Do employees get statements, same where...
Did Barb know that she was supposed to be receiving statements?
I pointed that out to her, and she said that she had never received a statement, ever. Now, this has only been around since, I believe, what, ninety-five or ninety-six, when they came in, when they created all the individual management agreements there. But, um, hasn't been around that long, but I would think in the last five years, we'd have gotten a statement. I checked with the Chamberlain's Office, figuring that maybe it went to the payroll department instead, because they're the ones that shell out the dollars on behalf of the employees. They received nothing. In fact, they told me, go to the personnel office, and personnel office told me to go to the Chamberlains, figuring that the other ones received it. And I went to both several times, and nobody's gotten it.
We'll definitely send a, a request out for the information.
All right. I just think that if you took a look at the fees that these folks are charging, and I suspect I know what they are, you'd be able to find it cheaper someplace else.
According to what it says here, you have to request it. They just don't send it to you.
I have requested it.
So, so then the process of sending...
I've requested it probably three times in writing over the last eighteen months.
Okay, of the same thing.
I would recommend that we table this. Dave, I think your suggestion that we request this, you request it, or have Barb Weymet request it, in interim, we would consider going out for bid.
New York State already has a predefined list of requirements. If we do eventually go out to bid as an official request for proposals, there's a, I got, the summary plan description that you have is more or less a prepackaged deal. You just fill in a couple of blanks and away you go. And there is an RFP system that is basically the same thing, and I'll get that for you too.
Do we have a motion to table?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I, I, I would also be interested in knowing if our employees got something in the mail from this company, because I'm involved with the county's deferred compensation program, and we receive something quarterly.
Right. Most companies will give you, will give the participant a statement quarterly, but at the same time, they should give the employer a statement.
No, I agree.
With the county, right now, the county is through nationwide.
Right.
And when the participants, when the county employees get their statements, the county personnel office gets a master statement.
Right.
Your account, you know, your personal account says you have, you know, two thousand dollars or whatever it is, you know, times five hundred and sixty participants. You know, the county gets a statement that says fifteen million dollars, and it's all broken down. So it doesn't list any of the individuals, but it's just a, a master, like, summary description, and we should be getting that.
We will request that. Next item.
Resolved that the city clerk be authorized and directed to advertise or receive sealed bids in his office on or before Monday, June seventeenth up to two P.M. and to be publicly open at two fifteen P.M. that same day in the council chambers located on the second floor for the construction of the City of Fulton, New York, South Fourth Street Pump Station upgrade in accordance with specifications prepared by Blaisland, Baugh, and Lee, sixty-seven twenty-three Topath Road, Syracuse, New York.
Motion?
Move it. Second.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. We have a discussion item on the agenda in regards to...
Cats.
Cat regulations.
Put that on there.
It wasn't me.
Does anybody in the audience...
It was me, actually. This was my fault.
Does anybody in the audience have, care to speak on this issue?
You could help.
We want to explain what's going on first.
Explain why we did this?
No.
Well, this is, the Legislative Committee's been looking at potential cat regulation for two years, probably.
Yeah.
Um, last year, we had a lot of people summon writing, complaining that stray cats are a real problem. They urinate on gas grills, and the mayor was invited over for hamburgers, and respectfully declined. Um, so we've been looking at this. We know it's controversial, and rather than, we, we have several, several, uh, skeleton forms of possible laws and from different places, and rather than just put one on the table and say, "Let's have a public hearing," we, I, I thought if we put it on for a discussion item that is part of that, maybe we could set a public hearing without a proposed law, but just to get the public input, because the problem is when you, when you actually put something in writing, say, "This is our proposed law," even if, even if you are not sure that that's what you want to pass, but you want to get public input, a lot of the times the public reads that and thinks, "Well, you're trying to pass this." You know, which is understandable to think that, but we more, at this point, would, would like some ideas, I think, as to where... like some ideas, I think, as to where...
Yeah, I think what we can do is, is lay out what a few of the suggestions are. One of them is, you know, licensing cats, saying that, you know, for two bucks, you gotta get a little kitty tag, and if we catch your cat in the street, you know, it's gonna cost you to pick it up from the pound.
It's 60 days to pick up the cat, or we shoot it.
No, it's like five days. Right?
Oh, it's a 60-day. It's a 60-day rule.
How do we know, I'm gonna tell you, Joe, let, let me tell you a story, Joe.
... these humongous cat problems?
I got a phone call from a lady...
I'm just kidding, I'm serious.
I got a phone call from a lady on Utica Street. She's about two blocks away from my house, and she says, and this is no lie, Joe, I swear to God, this is true. She calls me up and says, "The lady across the street from me had her trash out to the road. It was garbage day, perfectly legal. It was 10 o'clock at night, it was after the seven o'clock cutoff, perfectly legal. Her trash was in bags, not cans, perfectly legal. My cat was across the street digging into her trash, and that lady poured a bucket of water on my cat. What are you gonna do to her?" I suggested that her cat should not be across the street digging in other people's garbage, and she didn't want to hear that from me. But if you stand on Utica Street, Rochester Street, Buffalo Street, Keogah Street, Onida Street, you know, any given evening between 4:00 and 9:00, you'll see 20 cats. They're everywhere. I don't know about your neighborhood, I don't know about Mr. Squidery's neighborhood, or anybody else. In my neighborhood, there's a lot of cats. And I own a dog, and I will say no more about them. The dog does a good job of keeping them out of my yard, but instead, they just, you know, stand up with their nose peeking through the fence, and they're everywhere. They're everywhere, and some, I mean, something's gotta be done, because they're everywhere. And we don't know how to control it, and I don't want to get into a spot where we say that we're gonna charge, you know, a buck for a little kitty tag, and the room gets filled because nobody wants to pay a dollar for Fluffy to get a tag. We want it to be as friendly as possible, we're not trying to make a buck on it, we're trying to reduce the number of cats that roam in the streets. You know, the dogs cannot roam the streets, so why can a cat? Now, but the flip side is, you gotta have, you have, we have a leash law with the dog, but you can't have a leash law with a cat, because a cat can climb a tree and can hang itself. I don't have a comment on that either. But, so, you know, cats are allowed to go, you know, what if my cat stays inside all the time? Do I have to get a license if I don't let him out? There's a lot of things that will come up, and I think what we want to do is, we want to lay out what three or four different ideas are, put them all out there, and then whatever the public says, the preferences go in that direction. Now, it may turn out that the public says, "I love 50 cats in the street," in which case, I guess I'm gonna have to live with it, but I don't see that happening.
What do you think?
More Chinese restaurants.
Get some Kung Pao Kitty.
We, we haven't noticed a large decline in, in the population with the opening of new restaurants, so I, I don't think that that works, even though it...
Darryl, you're bad. We, we just want to get an idea. We don't want to put one thing out in particular and say, "This is the way it's gonna be," because all the cat owners might show up and say, "Isn't this a better idea?" Or, "Isn't this a better idea?" And the better idea is maybe one of the three or four or five things that we're already considering. So we want to throw them all out there and say, "Which ones do you like, because that's what we'll pick."
Basically, I think what will work is if the cat owners will take responsibility for their cats. I have nothing against cats or cat owners or whatever. I do have something against people allowing their cats to roam and come into my property and mark their territory on the trash cans outside my back door. I don't find that very appealing whatsoever. And I have a problem with that, and I understand the other people that call me or write letters and complain about this and say, "We have a cat problem."
It's not just that either. I mean, you also have, you know, we're trying to encourage people to spare neutered their cats, so that they're not, you know, 500 litters of little kitties all over the place. In the summer around here, you know, rabies is getting to be a problem. If your dog doesn't leave the yard and doesn't get bit by a skunk, when you get your dog tag, you gotta show a rabies license or a rabies vaccination. You don't with a cat, because we don't have a cat licensing thing. You know, we want cats to get rabies shots too, so that they don't spread rabies. And, you know, every year for the last four or five years is beginning to be more and more of a problem with rabies in this county. And Fran Sullivan, for the last six years, I believe, has tried to get a lot like this through Albany to stop the, or to slow down the spread of rabies in upstate New York. So it's not just, you know, the cats running through the streets, even though that is part of it, you know, there is more to it. But we don't know for sure what direction we want to go in, so we want to get everybody's input to help us.
We, we are definitely looking for input, and I wouldn't be at all surprised if, if after stories involving this are in the local media, that probably we will get considerable input.
So our problem is, the homeowner or the pet owner allows their cat out during the night to go roaming.
Or day.
Or day.
And it's usually the unspayed or unneutered ones, because they're the ones that mark their territory, and they're the ones that'll fight in alleys.
I have two or three cats in my neighborhood that are constantly around my property, and they, and they go during the night. So we have two problems. A homeowner wants to let the cat run loose, and they don't want the cat bothering them, whining and crying to get out, so they let it out. So they have everyone in the neighborhood, that's that person's problem. Two, what is the difference between a dog as a pet and a cat? I think the dog is leashed, tied to the yard...
There, there is state law that controls dogs.
We have a leash law on a cat.
No.
No.
No. And as I said, the, the state has laws concerning dogs and the licensing of dogs.
The state does not for cats.
So we have to do one of two things. Either homeowner or pet owner has to walk the cat on the leash, which they don't like, which is almost impossible. And two, if the cat is picked up on property other than their own, the cat has to be arrested. We arrest dogs.
Well, we do, we do pick up...
Wherever you're gonna put the cat, where you're gonna put it.
There are times we do pick up cats.
Right.
They go to the pound in Oswego.
And after five days, they're killed.
Right.
Forty-eight dollars.
Euthanized after five days.
We pay to ship them to Oswego.
It costs forty-eight dollars for every animal that we take down there.
And we pay for putting them to Oswego?
Yes.
In addition to the forty-eight?
I think that's included.
That's part of it.
So now, these are cats. Would they be licensed or not licensed, any cat?
Well, the, the way I had actually originally envisioned this is, at one time, I had a neighbor that had skunks under his porch, and we would have, this is before we had the Animal Control Officer, we were hiring out trappers, and the guy would show up in the morning and set a trap, and he'd come back the next morning, would catch a cat. So he'd let, let the cat out, and then set the trap again, come back the next day, caught the same damn cat. Let the cat go, set the trap, come back the next day, catch the same cat. So I started thinking, you know, it's costing 35, 40, 50 bucks a copy to show up and let this cat go. If this cat had a license, first of all, if I truly loved my cat, I'm gonna come and report that it's lost, go to the police station or whatever, I lost my cat before 60 days. And if I caught your cat, I would think that the, the first time, the first time your cat gets caught, here it is, shame on you. The second time, 50 bucks. The third time, 100 bucks. Because pretty soon, you're gonna know that your cat's getting out and it's getting caught. And what I would like to see is, if you have a license, I know where to find you if I pick up your cat. If you don't have a license, I don't know who it is, so poor Fluffy might go bye-bye in five days if I can't get ahold of you. So if your cat, Alderman Sahaski has two cats, they don't get outside the house, to which I say, "Fine, don't get a license." But God help Fluffy if it gets picked up in a trap or by the dog catcher or whatever, because we have no way to get it back to you.